I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. And also let the record show that Councilwoman Torquillo arrived at 5:34 this evening. We'll go on to our non-consent agenda. Item F1, update on Austin, Texas and Washington DC legislative progress. Goal eight, create a resilient, sustainable community. Ernie Gonzalez. Ernie, are you there?
It should be up on the screen in just a second.
Hello.
Hi.
Here?
Yeah.
Can you hear me well?
You're up.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. And I'm sorry I missed you all last week, but I'm going to get an opportunity to present this evening. Thanks to Charles for sending that out, and also to Jesus. I do have a outline or an update that I provided that you all should have in your package. It's a multi-page document. I'm going to summarize everything just to bring you all to see on what EMC Strategy Group has been doing on behalf of the city and the joint entities that were working with some partnership. This update was titled or dated on 6/9/2025. I do want to begin by letting everybody know that EMC Strategy Group launched and operated, launched a new office in Washington DC. This is going to allow us to better represent all of our clients. It's a block and half over from the White House on 1901 Pennsylvania Avenue. So this was a great move for EMC Strategy Group. We've been in business for 10 years, but we've been in the business for over 25 years. So we launched that office just a few weeks ago. The other thing I want to bring up is that EMC did represent the city, the Economic Development Corporation, and the county from January 14, 2025 through June 2, 2025, during the Texas Legislature session, which was the 89th session. We really appreciate the members of the city council and those on the county commissioners court and E C board that participated during our legislature days that we held in March. And also, we also had a couple opportunities to testify before committees. I do want to thank Charles, your city manager, who also joined me and the judge before appropriations committee before the House also during the session. So as I go through the report, I also want to mention that EMC, at the request of your city manager, has been participating in the Texas Transportation Commission meetings in March, April, May, and will participate again in June. The Texas Transportation Commission, that's the group, the governing board that oversees all Texas dot related operations, planning, coordination of project requests, and also deciding which projects are going to be funded and prioritized by the Texas Transportation Commission and then the Texas Department of Transportation itself. So been doing a lot of activity with respect to transportation. In fact, just a short while ago, I forwarded a letter that was signed by you mayor, the county judge, and also David Dominguez, which is the board chair for the Pago's Economic Development Corporation. We sent that letter over to Senator Blanco requesting that a local representative from the Reeves-Paco area be appointed to the Texas Freight Advisory Committee, which is a very important committee because they actually prioritize all transportation infrastructure projects related to freight. And in fact, Charles and I attended the last Texas Freight Advisory Committee, and it was announced at that point that the Pacos Freight Village project was prioritized for funding and recommended to the Texas Transportation Commission on the next round of projects. So that was very exciting to hear that. And I think a lot of that was because we are now being more engaged with not only the commission, but also the Freight Advisory Committee. And so we're hoping that based on the letter that was signed by the three heads of the three organizations, that Senator Blanco will use his leverage to appoint somebody. We did request that Charles be appointed to that commission, and we're hoping that, you know, he takes it up on that request. I also want to mention that, as I mentioned during the session, we had an opportunity to testify before a committee. This was a huge opportunity. We were asked to support House Bill 188, which was chaired or followed by State Representative Brooks Landra, and also co-authored by our state representative, Eddie Morales, who is vice chair of the Energy House Committee. The HB 188 would satisfy severance tax funding for energy-producing counties and their infrastructure projects. Now, if you all recall, those that participated during the legislature days in Austin, we had specifically made that argument. And we had a one-pager that listed our priorities. And the recapture of severance tax was one of the main things that we were asking for. And the idea was that, you know, there's a lot of money that's taken from Reeves County and brought to Austin and redistributed throughout the whole state. It's kind of like a Robin Hood, you know, but when it comes to the infrastructure funding. And that creates an unfair situation where you've got other projects that have been previously prioritized by Texas Department of the Commission, and your roads are getting ripped up. And I think that the argument was made. Now, HB 188, it did clear and pass the House Appropriations Committee, but unfortunately, it did not get a chance to be voted on in the chamber. However, we did have a huge success. So Dean of the Senate, Judith Zachary, she's a senator out of Laredo, she also represents the second largest energy-producing county in the state of Texas, which is Kearns County, and we started the Eagle Ford Show. Now, based on her interest and understanding on the need to recapture severance tax, she actually introduced a rider in the final appropriations committee bill that was approved by the House and the Senate and signed by the governor. The rider included language that it would provide between 250 million to 500 million specifically for energy-producing counties and their infrastructure projects. So all the bill that we were advocating for and lobbying for did not make the legislature victory. We would call this the victory because we were able to get the same thing done through the appropriations bill. Now, we also received obviously support from our own Senator, Senator Blanco. And Senator Peter Fournier, I understand, at a brief moment represented Reeves County before redistricting. So we are going to find out a little bit more over the next several weeks when the governor's office releases the final allocated funding for infrastructure projects. And as soon as I find out whether it was going to be at the high end or the lower end, we will make sure that you all know. Now, one of the things that we are working on to leverage that funding, and Charles, who has attended the commission meeting before and also the Freight Advisory Committee, he saw and I saw that those communities that have a combination of a metropolitan planning organization and a regional mobility authority, they're the ones that about 90% of the time are getting prioritized by or for funding by the commission. So what we've begun already is the county has engaged in a contract with a transportation expert named David Garcia. He and I previously worked on the Hill in Washington together as congressional staffers. He previously also ran the second largest regional mobility authority in Texas. There's only 10 RMAs in Texas and over 20 MPOs. So the way the MPOs and RMAs are structured is that the RMA, they have a chair that is appointed by the governor. Now, the area that forms a regional mobility authority, it's to their benefit that they recommend somebody that will be approved by the governor. So we are going to leverage our relationship with the Texas Transportation Commissioner, who is from Pacos, out in New, and also work with our senator to find, to identify the chair that can head up that regional mobility authority. Now, the RMA, they actually execute the transportation projects of a local territory. And they do recapture severance tax money, and there's several tools that they use to fund their operations. So in essence, an RMA is like a miniature Texas. And an MPO is like a miniature Texas Transportation Commission, and they decide which budgets are going to be prioritized. So we are working with that. I know that there has been a request for the city and the Economic Development Corporation to also engage with the adversity to help us with moving this project forward. The other thing that I want to cover is that on May 21, both Charles and myself and the judge and Jimmy Dutchover participated in a meeting at Texas dot headquarters with the commission meeting. And we were bringing forward the priorities that had been shared during our legislature days in Austin and in Washington DC. Those three things have included the lane expansion on US 285, and also the relief route in Pacos, and also the freight advisory, or the freight village that's been prioritized by the advisory committee. So we just repeated those same items, making sure that our commissioner, who's from Pacos, is very well aware of the three major transportation priorities that we're working on. And while there, we also mentioned that we were looking to form an RMA and an MPO, and that we wanted to get support. At that meeting, we also mentioned that we were going to host a meeting in Pacos, and that we're going to invite the executive director of the of Texas dot, his name is Mark Williams. So we're hoping that next month, he will visit on the same day that Congressman Tony Gonzalez will do a side visit on US 285. That's going to be on July 29. On July 29, we'll get the congressman for about three hours in Pacos. And one of the big things that we're going to be pushing is, you know, support for the RMA, support for the MPO, the importance of putting funding for the lane expansion on 285. And as I mentioned 285, I do want to mention that last week, while I was there Monday through Thursday, on day two, David Garcia and I drove on US 285 towards the state line. And I'm glad that we did, because it's one thing that I've heard mayor, I've heard you, and I've heard the other city council members talk about how dangerous that highway is. But when I got to drive it on that highway for a few hours, I got a sense, a greater sense of appreciation for just how dangerous it is. And while I was traveling north on 285 from Pacos, past Orla into Carlsbad, I didn't see that once you cross the state line, they go from two lanes to four lanes, and they got a big old sign in New Mexico that says that their transportation projects were funded through the Bicarbonate Infrastructure Bill in the Congressional Second District of New Mexico. So, you know, that was important for you to see that. That gives me the ammunition that I need to continue to lobby on behalf of the community. The other thing that I do want to mention is that in addition to inviting the Texas dot executive director over to Pacos, one of the things that we do want to prepare is, and this is on item eight, is the UTP, the Unified Transportation Program, begins on August 1. And we've already been informed that based on the public meeting that Texas dot had several weeks ago in Pacos, that the relief route project has been prioritized and included as one of the top funding infrastructure projects in this year's UTP. That's a huge thing. So we're going to continue to ask for greater funding. One of the things that we did learn at that public meeting is that the project is now estimated, I believe, $760 million, which is what the fourth phase of the relief route project is total debt. And so that's obviously going to need some funding from the federal government. So we're going to be lobbying government states of the federal legislature for that. As I go through this, I do want to mention that just about every item that the delegation that was in Austin representing the city asked for, received funding in the appropriations bill. So there was increased funding for transportation infrastructure projects, increased funds for workforce development, increased funding for public safety, body of life, and then also water infrastructure. SB 7, which is going to provide millions of dollars of transportation, or not transportation, but water infrastructure funding, is going to have a huge impact in all of Texas, especially West Texas. So there is a water desalinization pipeline that is currently being constructed in Oasis County along the coast. So once the project is complete, there will be a water line that's going to run from the coast into West Texas. So we've already requested, I've requested a meeting with the gentleman and the team that is running that project via our congressman. The Congressman Tony Gonzalez office is helping to coordinate a meeting in Corpus Christi so that we can take the delegation from the Reeves-Paco area to tour that water deep out plant, but also to start planning to see that the Reeves-Paco area wants to be included as a recipient of that water infrastructure that's going to be deployed on West Texas. There was also significant funding added to the Texas Energy Fund, which, by the way, the Pacos power plant is a recipient of some funding. And as I go through this, I do want to acknowledge that yesterday Congressman Tony Gonzalez did announce that the Heroes Housing Project was reintroduced for fiscal year 2026. I'm not sure if it's that dollar amount that was mentioned last time, but the current updated funding has been requested and noted and reported on Congressman Gonzalez. West side has twelve billion, five hundred thousand. From what I understand, from what Jimmy Dutchover told me, that was a significant increase from the previous allotment. And so we're pretty excited about that opportunity to provide housing for the Heroes program. We are also in continued discussions with ICE with respect to the county detention facility. If you didn't know, those that participated in the DC trip, we actually did this with ICE. And as a result of that meeting, and I want to acknowledge Sarah. Sarah was a big contributor in that meeting. She kind of threw me for a loop when she was talking about the prison. I didn't know her background, but thank God that she was there to get down. I think we're in direct contacts with the judge, and they're negotiating a contract for usage. I think that's all I want to cover right now. The final thing is that now that the session is over, it's going to be very important that we engage our state representative or our state senator so that we can start working on preparation for the 90th legislature session, which will begin on January of 2027. So in this interim, they call it the interim session, we plan to engage our state representative state senator and come up with our wish list of that before the session starts next time, that we're able to coordinate legislation that's really going to impact our community and get feedback from the stakeholders, including the city council, county commissioners court, school district officials, and the rest of the folks who are part of the two by six. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'm looking.
Ernie, I have a question. So let's say we move forward with this RMA. Councilman Carrasco, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
If we had our own RMA, how much money, if you had a guess, would we be able to have access to?
About $20 million.
In being our own RMA, we wouldn't have to share any of that money. We would have our own entity to make our own decisions and kind of maneuver around Texas dot?
Yes. And so there was 200, let's just say that at the low ball, there's $250 million. So there's 10 RMAs state line. And so the MPOs and RMAs have multiple projects. So we look at an approximate number of what type of money an RMA will have access to in the biannual, the two-year funding appropriation, it's probably at the low end going to be $20 million. And so the idea is to have both the MPO and the RMA to leverage the funding. So the MPO will include at least two representatives from the city, and they have to be elected officials on the MPO. So it'll be two city council members, two county commissioners court, two members of the EUC, and then maybe an additional elected official from each group. So at least a minimum of two. But you leverage funding by having both. And so every two years, you could have another $20 million that goes towards infrastructure funding. And that was a good, another question. Let me give you another answer. That's just $20 million from the state of Texas. So the RMA can also apply for funding from the federal government through congressional incorporation, can also apply for other grants that Texas may offer. And Texas may have some grants that are available, like a state street grant. And then the RMA has a tool that it can also incur debt if the RMA decides to travel, to use that route. use that route. But you know, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. The idea is let's try to get that money that's below hanging free and then prioritize on the projects that have been identified or that will also be identified in the future by the RMA.
So just to recap, it'd be a benefit where we don't have to wait on TexDOT to make a move. We would just be able to have our own board, on that board, we would make the call on projects that we want to move forward with. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct. And I'm glad you caught that and you remembered that because, yeah, so like the RMA, it's like its own little TexDOT, like controlled block, which is even better.
Any ex officio going to be on there? I mean, I know we have board, we have them appointed by the governor, but are we going to have any ex officio on there, on us, have some say on that, some influence? Boots on the ground?
As we develop the RMA and the MPO, the local entities will contribute towards the development of the bylaws. And so I'm sure Parker is going to be very involved with that, including the attorney from the EDC and the county. And when we form the steering committee, it's going to be important to get input from all the stakeholders. The entire city council needs to be involved in this process and that, you know, that we don't skip a beat.
That's good. Thanks, that's right.
Any other questions, Mayor? So mark calendars again, on July 29th, Congressman Tony Montalas will be in town. We're going to have a stakeholders meeting at City Hall. I've already sent a calendar invite to Charles and he'll distribute that, that time information and we'll use it. Thank you all very much. Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Go to item F2, discuss, consider resolution 25-06-01R, authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Smith Truck for a 2025 West Star 49X roll-off truck for a total amount of $229,900. Strategic goals, sound governance, and physical management, Calvin Richly, Public Works Director.
Good evening. Pete Morales, landfill supervisor, mayor, council. How are you? I'm here today to respectfully request a purchase of a new roll-off winch truck from Smith Body, Truck Body for a total of $229,900. This is a capital item, budgeted item, sorry. Our aim is to be proactive and to replace our 2015 model, which is 10 years old now. We also got with our fleet manager and has evaluated the truck and his findings indicate significant wear and tear, including visible cracks on the frame and attachment structure.
May I make a motion to approve F2, which is a 2025 West Star 49X roll-off truck for a total amount of $229,900. I'll say.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona and a motion from Councilman Saldana to approve resolution 25-06-01R as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F3, discuss, consider resolution 25-06-02R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with R&amp;R Scale and Measurement, Measurements Body LLC for a 70X 11 armor of steel deck truck scale with side rails, 225D, SB 600, WIN VRS and Foundation for a total amount of $131,345.2. Strategic goals, sound governance, and physical management, Calvin Richly, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pete Morales, landfill supervisor. We're, I'm here to respectfully get your approval for a new steel deck truck weight scale and side rails from NR Scales and Measurements, totaling amount of $131,345.2. This is a budgeted item. This old scale, we plan to replace it from the metal 90s. It's pretty old. We had a technician conduct a maintenance on the scale, maintenance inspection. Some of the following issues were noted from the technician, whereas follows metal fatigue resulting from repeat of stress has led to the weakening and cracking of the metal components.
Is this the scale when you drive into the landfill?
That's correct.
Is there any innovative scales out there now with new technology and all that could catch some things that we're missing with the human eye or something that we might want to look into, you know, down the road? Or should we do the other project in the next four years? But, you know, is there something, maybe we could talk about it some other time, but that's something I'd like to look at more X-ray stuff that, you know, we're not catching.
Yeah, coming in, like X-ray items, I haven't seen any of those, but I don't, some other landfills that are more modern, they're more automatic where the computer takes a camera, takes pictures of the truck and it's got some high cameras, it takes pictures of the items it's carrying and automatically logs them in, or prohibited items also that can, we can look into that.
No, that does exist. It does.
When do y'all think you'll install this?
But we're hoping by the end of the year.
So how does this affect the new landfill?
It doesn't.
So what do you do with this once we open the new landfill?
It'll be able to be moved.
Okay.
Yes, that was our first question.
I'll make the motion that we approve for resolution 25-06-02R. That's what I have. I'll say.
I have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve resolution 25-06-02R as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F4, discuss, consider resolution 25-06-03R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with BlackRock Automation for the maintenance and troubleshooting of the SCADA system at a cost of not to exceed $80,000. Goal seven, enhance Parkinson's infrastructure network, Calvin Richly, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Kelvin raises the Director of Public Works. As the mayor just read, we want to enter into a blanket PO to cut down on some of the paperwork that one of our admins is doing whenever we utilize BlackRock Automation, not to exceed $80,000.
This is for the SCADA system, for the water?
Yes.
For the water system?
Yes, sir.
So the SCADA system is there, this is just the controller?
Yes, this is, this is the, absolutely. So this is the vendor who comes in to assist us with troubleshooting when something happens, like high winds. Every time high winds come, a lot of times we'll have to get those guys out here to help us with troubleshooting.
Because I know we've had a SCADA system and I know over the past couple of years we've talked about it and how some of the pumps that go in and out have to be manually started instead of the SCADA doing all the work. So this is going to?
That's what we're working on with these guys, to modernize all of that and get out of the stone age, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, make the motion, we approve resolution 25-06-02R, presented by Kelvin Richly, Public Works Director.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Furio, to approve resolution 25-06-03R as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F5, discuss, consider resolution 25-06-04R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Park Hill in the amount of $336,541 for professional design services for the city council chambers. Goal five, promote open and consistent communication with Holly Giraki, directing community services.
Mayor, Council, Holly Giraki, Community Services Director. In your packet is a resolution to request professional services from Park Hill in the amount of $336,541. So this is a budgeted item and we have been going on several years attempting to find solutions for our city council chambers and we have exhausted other options that we had attempted to prepare for when we first moved into this facility. I spoke with a couple of providers of professional services that were previously vetted through our resolution process. Park Hill responded. We are looking at a different area of this building to actually create our council chambers. It will prove to be one of the better options for us as a whole. We will be able to independently add all of our necessary utilities without having to touch some of the antiquated utilities that we have here in this facility.
So this is just for a design?
This is just, it's actually three different tasks. So it can, it covers your design, your rendering, it also covers all of the administrative. So I would actually, if approved, be able to come back in six to eight weeks with some renderings of what they have, what they have planned in store for council chambers.
We haven't previously discussed this before. I feel like we had decided on a design or something, or did we not? Did I?
So in 2019, yes, ma'am, that's correct. So in 2019, when we purchased the building, we walked through the building with, with MEPs, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers. And they outlined everything. We did have a design that was brought by our previous assistant city manager back in And upon them finalizing the design, it wasn't actually, they still stated that there would be concerns. The concerns pointed out were what's behind the walls. Our electrical that we have, we have probably five different types of panels here in this facility, this building being designed in 1958, the lower level, which we were primarily going to be working with. So to answer that, we came back and we went into COVID. That actually is what stopped all of those expenditures on, on any changes to the facility here. And in turn, as y'all know, with that, once COVID was over, cost became astronomical.
We all was dreaming.
No, you weren't. No, no, you weren't.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
It's like everything, every time we wait, or we put it off, it just looks like it escalates when we're ready to pull the trigger or something.
You're exactly right.
That was a baseball field.
Yes.
What we were going to pay in 2012 to now, I mean.
This is actually the same, yes.
And so, and I'll say this about this design, here, here in this place, I can barely hear. I mean, my hearing ain't that great to begin with, but it's a way the acoustics are bad. I don't, sometimes I'm not, I can't hear, I know I can't hear Randy to begin with. But, you know, as you go further to the mayor.
I can hear you here. Yes.
But it's something that we need to do since 2019, since we moved from over there to here.
Yes.
I know, I remember talking about it and then they found this, they found that, and we can't do it, so.
Found a lot of stuff. We're actually, and just so you know, the chambers are going to be built outside. We're going to utilize, we have a structurally sound canopy, we've already invested and redone our roof, and it is actually the best location. It keeps everybody centralized here and it allows us to grow within this lobby area with staff. And it's actually coming in a few years.
Get a door to the spot where we can have food delivered.
You will have two back doors. Yes, you'll be able to, well, they have to open the door, open the gate back there, but yeah.
Was any cost on designs before COVID on chambers?
Was, the only piece that I was familiar with was the, was the civil, which was That is the only number I can give you. There was other, there was other dollars attached to that when it was created. I just wasn't privy to, I wasn't privy to it.
But we're building something new that we can make sure all the IT part of it, speakers?
Actually, yes, ma'am.
Visual, everything is upgraded to?
The design, but when it's done, is actually inclusive of everything. When I say everything, furniture, your kitchen, your restrooms, proper, proper dais, dais? Dais? So at the end of the day, it's going to be plug and play. We're going to have, everything is included in this. We decided to go that route, that is the best route for us to go now. Cost, is it costing, ultimately going to cost a little more? It is. But we are including the soft costs of adding all of the infrastructure that goes into completing the design, which is your, your furniture, your plant, everything that y'all utilize right now. It's just going to give you the proper space, ADA access, easy access for our community. They already know where we are, so we're not moving that. But we're going to be able to expand away from our canopy. So we're excited, we're excited about it. We're, I was, no, it's a long time coming, but we've been trying to find some solutions and it's just the most cost effective.
What are we paying for this?
Pardon me?
What are we paying, give or take? What's this project?
So right now, the design is stated here. The cost is anticipated to be at 2.8, costing us in the new budget year about 1.8. So we have budgeted a million for this project. And so to complete it, 1.8. We should be, bid documents should go out January, February, construction documents, construction to begin March, April 26. That is putting us at a completed timeframe about 10 months, so it can go into March, April 2027. So it's pretty aggressive, actually, considering we're doing, we're taking extra steps to make sure everything is, is completed properly.
So blueprint, sorry, is the blueprint set in stone, something we could tweak up down the road once we, we're still?
So, so we have 3,000 square feet that we're going to be able to work with. So every square foot is going to be, is, we're going to want to make sure we're utilizing every square foot properly. You're going to see some renderings if there's, you know, they're going to be shown to y'all and definitely want to have your feedback. So I would say, yeah, yes.
Well, basically, Councilman Saldana said the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be.
Yes.
The numbers are high, just for a design, just for somebody coming and looking at it, tell us what you would probably be looking for.
It's, yeah.
A square foot, but the longer we delay, the more cost it's going to be. If it is needed, at least while they're doing the design and it's going outside, they're going to be able to do it, the way we thought originally, the first one we did this building.
So.
How's it going to be funded, Mel?
So we have this funded through our capital outlay for, we actually had it for our city council, first floor, and it was, those monies were put in there specifically to do something.
So we've got this set aside on our way?
Yes, this is already in our capital outlay budget and the dollars that are left over from this will be moved into the new year and those dollars will then be put with the requested new budget request in our capital outlay to complete the project.
And just to clarify, is it appropriated this year?
Yes.
Last year, it will be, this is all going to be general fund dollars, so it will be taxpayer dollars that are coming, taxpayer and sous tax dollars as well. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 25-06-02R.
Approve Resolution 25-06-04R, presented by Holly Giraki. Say it.
Have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve Resolution 25-06-04R as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Item F6, discuss, consider Resolution 25-06-05R, entering into an agreement for the residential revolving loan fund with Desert Rose Holdings LLC, Strategic Goal One, Sustainable Economic Development, Heather Ramirez, Assistant City Mayor.
Mayor and Council, as you'll see in your packet, there is a resolution that authorizes us to enter into an agreement with the Residential Revolving Loan Fund with Desert Rose Holdings LLC. We did have, we did discuss this maybe two or three council meetings ago. Briefly, what it is, is our Residential Revolving Loan Fund. It's a financing tool that the city uses to stimulate and support the development of new housing within our city limits. Of course, it's designed to provide capital assistance to address the critical need of the housing supply shortage we have here. During the meeting, we did discuss how it met the criteria and the purpose of the Residential Revolving Loan Fund, and I do wanna let you know that we do have sufficient, we do have a sufficient balance in our account. We have a little bit over $440,000 in the account for this purpose. It's been utilized four times since we've, since the creation of it, and we've had three already pay back in full, and we have one outstanding, so this will be the fifth one. And of course, I do have the owner of Desert Rose Holdings LLC here too, if you have any questions. And in your packet, you'll see the PowerPoint and the renderings and what she plans to do with.
That house on Cypress, I could wait to see it when you're done.
And just anything new coming into Pecos? The problem with Pecos right now is, the houses out there are so expensive because we're, it's a supply and demand. We don't have the housing. And what we have, some of those houses out there aren't even worth what, what they're trying to sell them. But, it's, it's the nature of the beast of, of the oil boom, and, and I know that because I, I lived in Odessa long enough, and I experienced three booms while I was working for the oil boom. So, here in Pecos, we don't have what Odessa has. I mean, they, they're a lot bigger than us, so we're short. We're, we're real short on housing, and some of the housing that's out there being rented is ridiculous because they don't, they don't deal. So, unless we start building, we're gonna be suffering the same thing over and over again. And right now, we're in the middle of this, of this oil boom, and, and with everything new that's, that's coming into the, the community, we need housing. If anything, we need brick and mortar. That, that is what moves communities. That's how we're gonna get the stuff that's in Odessa, that we traveled to go get, back into our town. That's what those companies are looking for, is, is what do you have? You know, I don't want my, my employees on RVs. I don't. And unless there are RV parts outside the city limit, that's the only way it's gonna work, so we got a temporary order. And, but, we need housing, and I, I strongly support this because I, I want housing. I want housing. I know we got projects ready to go, and we just, you know, just take time. Governments move slow. But, if we can start doing it like this, and building homes, brick and mortar, that's, that's the direction we need to go as, as a community growth. I mean, you look at the South Side, everything that's happening with the new businesses coming in, and we don't have housing. That's, that's pretty ridiculous.
I'm gonna go in there. Well, I make the.
Before we make that motion.
Yes, sir.
How do we get, how does this RRLF fund get more money into the account? Like, how is the money getting to this council?
So, we, it initially started, the city funded it, and it is in an interest-bearing account, not that the interest rates are high, but we, the council set aside, I don't remember the exact amount off the top of my head, maybe Charles remembers, but the way is, as people are paying.
700,000 initially.
What we put in there? Yes.
For me, but it was established before I got here, but I think the initial amount was something.
Yes, so as it's being paid back, and of course, it's based on availability of funds. So, so that amount that we set aside will just keep revolving.
And I feel Ms. Dunhan has established herself in the community. She has a strong reputation. This is exactly what I feel this project is intended to do, so I'm also with Mr. Self about it, and I support it fully. Hopefully, we can grow the pot, you know, make, make it a little bit helpful for local developers that want to build homes that are still needed here in Pecos.
And that's one of the things I like to see is, is to make sure that it's local developers that are doing it. I mean, we don't, we can't stop everybody, but I like to see the local developers, our local businesses, take advantage of, of what the city can, can do and will do, so that we can help you, help ourselves.
And the reason I ask about the money is because down the road, I don't think that we should have more money in that account to start educating more local developers to support, and a lot of them don't know about this fund, so that's kind of something we could talk about more down the road.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Are you the rush, Randy? You can see this.
Randy's hungry.
I like where all the.
I'll second. Have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilwoman Trujillo, to approve Resolution 25-06-05R as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F7, discuss, consider Resolution 25-06-06R, a resolution approving the purchase of gear for the Pecos, for the Police Department from Barco Materials LLC in the amount of Goal Two, Safe and Secure City, Police of Toronto, Chief of Police.
Mayor, Council, Lisa Terango, Chief of Police. What you'll see before you is a request for a resolution for approving the purchase of tactical body armor for 10 officers. It's in the amount of $40,103.33, and this is a budgeted item.
Is this replacing some that you already have?
Yes, ma'am, it is replacement of gear that's actually not been replaced even before I got there. So, it's, it's tactical gear that, the need for it is, is there.
May I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-06-06R, Mr. Brandon, Chief?
Please say that.
It shouldn't be a discussion.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham, to approve Resolution 25-06-06R as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Let the record show the motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item F8, discuss, consider Resolution 25-06-07R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with Payne Industries for the 2023, 2025 Annexation Surveying Services. Strategic Goal One, Sustainable Economic Development, Charles Lino, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, no correction, Mayor, it's 2023 to 2028?
Oh, did I say?
You said 2020, yeah.
Okay.
And we are a little bit behind on this. I can tell you, in order for us to continue growing, we're gonna have to continue doing some of the annexation that we put into place. This plan was put into place back before, now it's restricted, and you have to get permission from the state legislature to get it done. So, we don't want to get there. We're trying to get caught up on where we at, where we are at, and where we need to be. We did have six qualifying bidders for these projects, and they were evaluated by six staff independently, as state procurement law requires, and I, and Payne Industries was the highest rated individual. I mean, they were all, we had all over the place. I can tell you, scores went from 420, 400 up to 474. There were none below that range. The packages were complete, so all of them had, all of the submittals had the relevant information per the RFQ in it.
What was the minimum score?
Minimum score was 400.
400.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this survey will let us know where we wanna add it?
Well, we already have, we already have a plan. What, what this, what this authorizes from an annexation plan, this, this engages a surveyor to go out and look at the areas that have already been designated at the state level. We have that map on our website with future annexation areas. They go through and they make sure that they have the, they geofence it and get it in there. Their, their job is to go out and talk, to work with every single landowner, make sure they have the correct landowner on all of the properties. They put the letters together, they have, we have to send them out through here, but it's a process of trying to make sure that as we reach out to people, and we have public meetings for these every single time. So, we're gonna have, be having a bunch of public meetings on some of this. Some of them can get a, very enjoyable, but it's something that we will move forward that way. But they do all of the, the legwork to get everything done, so that they can bring, they're gonna be the one that would come and present to council and show the work that they've done. And each one of the years is done individually, so it's not, council would have the ability through the public hearing to, to approve or disapprove and that piece of the annexation plan. I can tell you that he's working on two right now for, in the previous contract. One of them is one that we brought before council about a year and a half ago, and it did not qualify. This will be the last time that it can be brought back. If it's, if it doesn't pass this time, we can't bring it back ever. So, I was an advocate for it last time. I was not happy, but I'm not council, so I don't get to make the decisions. And it's something that, the way we're growing, if we do not continue annexing, annexations, we're not gonna be able to grow the city. We're gonna have to, I mean, I can tell you that Mr. Dutchover and I are looking at infill right now, and there's a lot of infill in the city, but we're gonna run out of that space real quick, like, and so we're going to have to grow in order to be successful here.
So, you say it didn't qualify, is that it didn't qualify at the state level?
No, it didn't qualify, but council denied.
Oh, okay.
The annexation at that time. I'm throwing stones right now, but just doing it nicely.
We'll go back to the secondary.
Yes, sir.
We are?
We are. One more time.
Is there more suitable places?
We're doing another one. We're gonna bring you two.
Okay.
We're gonna have some of those same people in here, Randy, for sure.
And that's, that's the main goal. We're picking up where the counties leaving off, or maybe not even taking care of, grow infrastructure, you know, and still remember one gentleman saying, "The city doesn't have anything I want, I don't wanna be that below." And I made the statement, and I made it very publicly, and I presented it to council. There's some areas out there that I wouldn't want in the city because we can't make them change until they sell it. So, you start building beautiful homes around certain questionable appearance areas, you know, who's gonna build around it? And some of these people are there for, have been there for a long time, and they have no plans on moving out. So, it's like, we're forcing them, and yet we can't make them change because of the work that we hate grandfathered in, you know, so.
The thing, the thing being is, part of the issue last time is they were totally satisfied. They're not on septic up there, I mean, they're not on city sewer, but Madera Valley had their water. Madera Valley no longer has their water. It's our water. So, they're having to use our water. So, we would have them, actually, the amount of property taxes that would be incurred from the city side, which is all we're talking about, are de minimis in the amount that they would save from buying water at, in the city's limit rate versus outside the city limit rate. So, there wouldn't be that. It's, it's just the whole look, and, well, we don't wanna pay city taxes. That's what it is. And they have that right. Everybody has that right, and not everybody's gonna be agreeable on it. I have, I, I'm looking at it strictly from being selfish from the city's piece and saying, well, I, I wanna have, I want this, us to have the ability to grow.
No, a lot back, you know, living down south, there was some pockets inside the city limit, and I, I was led to understand that, that they're, that they're receiving city services for the water, sewer, trash, police service, unemployment service there. After a while, they get, they don't have a choice.
No, it's, they have nothing. They are annexed into the city, yeah.
So, they're not in that area.
Yeah, and, and, and what, we're not, let's say that this doesn't happen again on this north side. If some of the landowners up there, they can voluntary, voluntarily annex into the situation, and that's where you start having little key, it looks like a key, because you have areas in and areas out, and it makes it very difficult to manage and try to provide services, because your next door neighbor's getting trash service and you're not. And that's where you start seeing some of that. It is, it is a controversial issue. It's why the state doesn't like it either, from that standpoint, but from that, we have a plan in place that if we do not exercise it, the only way we can annex is to go through the state. And they haven't been very supportive of that at, in a lot of communities.
Can we get Ernie and him to lobby for us to make that more favorable?
Absolutely. But, right now, the, the political climate is, I mean, especially, I mean, there's a couple of, I'm not gonna say any names because it's on, on live, and then some senator will come looking for me. But, but, there's a couple of, especially senators, and senators are very powerful that really are fully against home rule cities. And they are because they represent a home rule city that's a huge, that are huge cities that may need some controls in place. But that, all that does is really impact and hurt the smaller home rule cities that are just trying to get by and trying to make their, their community a better place to live.
Thing about these annexations is that, the last time I checked, is you have to have five years to come up just with the plan itself. Then what's the other magic number to start implementing sewer, water, and all that other stuff?
Two years.
Right. We're getting a little bit off the item that's listed.
Yeah. Sorry, Parker.
I'm a big advocate for local businesses. I feel that, nothing against Payne, they've provided services to the city. I did see a local firm that submitted their information for it, so that's the only issue that I have. I would really like us to go to Frank Spencer and Associates. I think they've done a great deal for our community, and they're invested, they have a building here, they pay taxes here, and I don't like overlooking our locals for projects like this, so. That's what I think. I really ought to go to Frank Spencer.
Why were the scores lower than the other ones?
Huh?
The score?
Yes.
They were at 400.
Yeah, they were. And I, and, you know, it's, it's public information. I can tell you that we, as a group, can throw out everything and redo it, or we can approve it. We can't change who's on here because of the, the scoring system. That's the only option that we have on this, and the reason that some of them scored lower is because the majority of the information that was submitted did not include annexation in, in the list of things that they did. It was strictly gonna be Public Works stuff. They were, I mean, if, if, if I was bidding this on, on Public Works projects, sewer, water, they rate higher because of their presentation and their package that was put together included an exorbitant amount of that. And every one of these firms were qualified. Some of them I'd never heard of too. We had two that were, we've never had a bid from. So, it was good to get six bids. Last time, I think we got three bids. But, up to council. If you wanted to go out for a rebid, no problem, we can do that. Or we can approve it as is. That's the only options that we have right now at this time. And Councilman Trujillo, I understand exactly where you're coming from.
So, you don't consider privacy or?
It's negotiated after the fact. This is on qualifications, and that's why it's an RFQ. So, we have to, you have to be the high, the highest rated qualified, submit, bidder submitting that. And every one of these bidders was qualified. It's just that when we rated them independently, the six of them. It's just that when we rated them independently, the six of us, there's no collaboration. If you collaborate, you're breaking state law. So we can't do that. So we can go through the process again if council desires that, no problem. It's just putting the RFQ out again, we'll do it again, and we've already, I mean, Cyra has it already typed up, so it's not gonna take a lot. We can, we'd have to modify it, I think, if we want to, to say that must include information on, on active projects or annexations that were done, if it wants to be clarified, but when you're doing an RFQ for annexation, you probably should submit stuff for annexation. And-
This guy that had the high score, is he the one that recorded?
He's the one that's done the last few, uh, ones for us, yes, sir.
You haven't had any issues with him?
No. I mean, I, I don't think, I honestly feel, we probably, I don't know, because some of them I haven't never worked with, but the rest of them that we have worked with before, everything that we've got from them has been successful. It's been qualified, it's not been anything. Uh, if not, I would be having conversations with mayor and council that, you know what, we need to disqualify this one because the product, their work product's not there.
I agree with Councilman Trujillo, but maybe we should state what we're really looking for, so we're looking to include them in the best qualifications.
I understand, that's up to council.
But I'll make a motion to send it out to bid again, with the stipulations of, for annexation, and we're working on, have worked on.
I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Trujillo, to send Resolution 25-06-07R out for requalification bid with the stipulation that they need to show annexation work. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I abstain.
Graham? And, Briscoe?
I'm gonna abstain, and I'm gonna look over the annexation area, and all your conversation on it.
The annexation area is the same one that we-
It's two, that we're looking, well, it, it will be the same. The one that is gonna come to you that's already been bid out, right now, this is for ones that have not come before council, the ones that we currently have, PAIN has already been engaged to finish those. So he's gonna, the ones that we're gonna bring back, they're gonna be from PAIN right now.
Okay, so the motion carries to send this for rebid with Councilman Graham voting no, and Councilwoman Briscoe abstaining. All those in favor, I already did that. So this one, carry. That's confusing. Item F9, discuss considering Resolution 25-06-08R, a resolution of the City Council of the Town of Pecos City authorizing the designation of a Pecos Cultural District. Goal five, promote open and consistent communications. Jimmy Detho, P E D C, executive director.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me here today. You know, when, when we started our trips in Austin, and we started even last year, we talked about how to create and stimulate what goes on downtown. Whether we did it through the arts, whether we did it through more renovations of buildings, acquiring buildings, you know, even actually looking at those that needed to be condemned, and then what would we do with those buildings? So there's a lot of things that we've talked about over the last year and a half. As we get to the district itself, the application process, keep in mind this, these are things that we do, like we did with Ernie Gonzalez and his lobbying his firm. It is a combination of the efforts of the Town of Pecos City, Reeves County, and the Economic Development Corporation, sharing in our efforts to try and not duplicate any work, and trying to get everything that we can done with the best interest of tax, our taxpayer dollars. In some instances, the, those that are coming into the community who are thriving and wanting to be here in Pecos, they're asking, "What's the culture like? What can we do? What are we gonna be expecting our families as we ask them to relocate to Pecos?" We're already doing it with the quality of life outside on the south side of town with the Cyclone baseball field, the park, the golf course, the rec center, the water district, or the water park that'll soon come, the splash parks, all the things that, that people want for their children, for their, their family members. Downtown is the hardest one, because you're, almost like what you were talking, what Holly was talking about earlier, with regards to the building, you're having to invest money in things that already are standing, or demolish them. So we're looking at trying to find ways to revamp the community. The mayor and our grant writer, and I, we meet at least quarterly. Mayor, please tell me that's right, quarterly. Uh, and we've set our goals, so we can, we can communicate with her, and she can bring them back to council and say, "Okay, look, this is the goal, this is the approach that they're taking just for the historical downtown, and ultimately, the next portion is the district." It is an application process, it, the cost to us is $10,000, and it's shared again by the three entities. What you're gonna see is not the entire videos of what we've already shot, it is a one-minute episode of what downtown is actually like. So, Jesus, hold on, hold on. Please keep in mind, the arts, as we, as they're defined, are not just canvas. We're not, we're, we're dealing with music, we're dealing with theater, we're talking about the things that we talked about, a, a playhouse, you know, reusing the Jersey Lily, the stage area that we can, you know, trying to bring in folk music, or actually, the, the plays that you see in Old West downtown. So with all that in mind, this is what it is, taking the old and bringing the new together. So, with that, Jesus, go ahead, sir. You have any sound with it? Technical difficulties. So, we're done? Um, with that, the, the next thing that we did was then we targeted the groups, and Ms. Holder's right, you know, we went after the different individuals or the different organizations that are already downtown, the museum, we got a tremendous amount of support, as you can tell. Then we also got support from the, the industries that are out there, the, the eating establishments. This area actually starts on Ash Street and goes to Hickory, and then it starts at the railroad station and goes all the way to Seventh Street. It is not a grant, it is actually an application which allows you to further the opportunities to go after more dollars. And, you know, home of the world's first rodeo, you know, the, the museum that we have, the Pecos Trail, that, that we're so famous for, because I tell everybody, "If you don't have transportation and you don't know how to get from A to B, you're never gonna get there, and the gold rush would have never happened." Well, we're having to do a lot of the things in reverse. Uh, but I tell people, it's an accordion, it's quality of life is number five, number four is education, believe it or not, the medical services are number three, infrastructure and, and, uh, brick and mortar is number two, and transportation is number one. If we don't get the transportation right, then we're gonna have our problems. But then if we don't get the culture right, and we don't do it in the right manner, we're gonna get stuck with almost exactly what some people think can happen. We need to be able to control it, and the only way they were gonna control it is to do it in the right manner, not, not let people tell us what they're gonna do, but let us help them in what we want in those areas. And that's what this district would do. Uh, as far as the cost, it is a, it is a public and private partnerships. Again, each of the groups that we're bringing in, we are asking them to give the money, or give part of the money to the Economic Development Corporation so that we can do their marketing, we can do the things that they're asking us to be able to provide for their families. And in addition, if we do the culture district right, if we do the historic district right, if we do the baseball right, if we do the water park right, then the hotels are filled up. And guess what? Now people want to come to Pecos, to stay for a weekend, for a long weekend, for a long week, to go out to the, to enjoy the rest of the, the trans-Pecos areas, and then go home. Or to just enjoy it and make home Pecos. Uh, the video that you saw was just one small snippet of which y'all will be able to see in executive session next week. And the rationale behind it is because the only ones that have seen it right now are the Economic Development Corporation directors and the two ex-official members that were there yesterday. Uh, after that, it's going to be up to the, the county, will see it next, uh, next week, and it's not to supersede you, but we did the first part with y'all. And then after that, then we'll be able to show the public. It'll be on the website, we own approximately fifteen hours of video, that's correct, and the video team will be back next week for the rodeo in its entirety to take, take the pictures of the, of the parade, the old timers, things that are gonna go on, the dance. Uh, there's nobody that's gonna showcase Pecos better than us, and if we don't do it now, we're gonna get stuck with whatever comes our way. And then we're gonna say, "Well, I told you so, and I don't want to be in that, that boat." So with that, with all, all that being said, I'll answer any questions that y'all may have. Remember, it's just an application. It, it's a step where we're allowed, Randy, now we get to go and use, leverage the, the support of our legislators, the support of bringing in groups that want to, you know, the, the traveling musicians, the traveling artists, displays, that's what we want to be able to do. We can do it, it's just not gonna be beneficial to us. They're not gonna look at us, they'll bypass us, just like they have in the past. It is just one more tool for us to be able to recruit groups to come down. It'll actually be administered from the tourism, and if we get the chamber back up then. In the meantime, it's gonna be the Economic Development Corporation. We've agreed to do that.
One of the things I'd like to see is downtown to get built up again like it was back in the sixties and seventies, when everybody was walking around because we had stores. Now we've got a bunch of buildings falling apart, and a few that are, that are open and, on Saturday nights, when you're, or Friday night, Saturday night, man, there's a lot of people in, in downtown. And, let me, let me tell you what I saw, and, and, and you probably have seen it, but I went, I went to Carlsbad last weekend, it just, just in and out, but I, I went Friday night, and there's a man camp between Mentone and, and Carlsbad, and we went, like, at eight o'clock in the evening, everybody was at their man camp. I bet you there were a thousand cars in that man camp, thousand cars and trucks. Because when we came, when we went back Monday during the day, there was no vehicles there, because everybody was working. So what's keeping those people from coming over here? We don't have nothing. Restaurants close at nine o'clock. We don't have anything. We have, we have a forty million dollar baseball complex, and yet those teams go elsewhere to go eat because we don't have national brand restaurant. I hate going to Odessa to go eat, because I get tired of eating at the same place, and I love what we have here in town, but I wanna see, I don't wanna spend my money over there, or in El Paso. I wanna enjoy those towns when I feel like it. But, you know, and, and you know what bothers me the worst? Is our young people leave, and they don't come back, because what do we have in Pecos to bring them back? Nothing.
We got one that's already, and then more, and more.
But we need, we need this. What makes, what makes Sixth Street in Austin is all them young people. When you go to, to the west end in Dallas, Fort Worth, good God, it's all young people. We need our young people to come back, because they, I mean, we have a first-class, or we're gonna have first-class education system. We have some smart kids that have gone, become lawyers, doctors, and all that, but what do we have to bring them, what, what does, what do we have to entice them to come back? I got two grandkids trying to, the one's graduating next year, and I'm, I'm trying to keep them here. And, because there's nothing, I mean, those towns are, are good, and if you've never lived in another town, you oughta try it, because there's not, there's nothing like home. I, I lived for thirty-five years, and then I come home and, man, I'm disappointed. Because I, I was raised here, I lived here in the sixties, the seventies, and I left in mid-seventies. And I loved walking downtown. Now, I walked in here, and I told my friends that are still here, I said, "What happened to Pecos? What happened to this town?" We had stores, almost filling stations everywhere downtown, we had stores, lumberyard, we ain't got jack today. And that, to me, that bothers me. We're a boom in town, and we ain't got nothing to keep people here. We got thousands of people out there in all of Mentone, down here, south, west, and where do they go? We got a base, a semi-pro baseball team, and I went over there to go see it. There's twenty people watching a semi-pro baseball team, that's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to me, because this is our town, and we're trying to promote this town, and, and, you know, I know people don't like change, but change is coming, like it or not. Because Pecos has already dropped the ball one time, when Chesapeake came in here in the, in the late two thousands, and they started drilling everything there, and, I got hard work for Chesapeake. And Chesapeake told them what was fixing to happen, and now it's happening. And, so I kinda support this, because I was looking for, it's a culture district. A culture district is a concentration of cultural institutes. We have museums, we have a car museum, that, that's awesome. I went Saturday over there to look at those cars, there, there is totally awesome. We don't have theater, but who goes to the theaters nowadays? Everything you can see on the phone or on the computer. But, we have a world-class, one-act team, every year at the high schools. I've gone to go see those kids, God, man, they, they do, they do awesome. We have performing venues, like, there's a spot. I perform at the park, I've done it here at the museum myself, you know, I'm not no superstar or anything like that, and I play just Christian music, but people come to those things. We need, we need, and we need businesses to, that will support all this. But it starts with the community first. We have a semi-pro team that wanted to come here to play baseball, we built it, state-of-the-art complex, and yet the, the community doesn't support it.
You know-
Maybe it's not advertised right, I don't know.
Along the lines of, of the, the support, you know, Judge Hung submitted, submitted his letter of support, the Jack Brookshire from the Memory Lane Car Museum, of course, the West of Pecos Museum, Dorinda, the spot, and of course, the Keep Pecos Beautiful. We brought them in, and, and of course, we explained to them the situation, and what we were trying to do, they embraced it. And this couldn't have been done if, you know, Griffin wouldn't have been able to help, and Cyra. You know, we understand that we sometimes have to lean upon the city to get things done, especially in an expedited manner. I, I feel bad that I wasn't able to get ahold of Mr. Holder and his team to bring them in, but, you know, it was crunch time, we had to do what we had, and so Leslie, I apologize for that, but, with all, I mean, we, we did what, what we thought was best. And again, it, it's really up to the council. You know, this is just, this is the first step of the other steps that we're gonna have to take, hopefully, to increase the parking, to do the things that are necessary, to make it walking friendly, and I wish that we could get, you know, the, the theater going, but that's up to one person, it's in the hands of one individual, so.
I'm trying.
So if we, if we pass this, can we, can you later on go and recruit and get more- So if we pass this, can you later on go recruit and get more sponsors or more people to say, "Hey, I want in, I wanna buy into this"?
Yeah. And we may also get some that says, "I don't want it." I mean, so we gotta be prepared for that as well, but...
What I'd like to have seen, I'll support too, but I agree with Conrad on what he said. How's this gonna, is this possible to help the buildings fall apart? You know, just something I need to, something I've seen.
Right.
And, you know, will you make a list of advantages of having a cultural district? Make it, put it down in writing.
Right.
You know, like I said, this is the first time I've seen this. Yeah, I want all those things too, but it's gonna be, if it all wasn't here, you know, we'd be flat on our friends.
We would.
If it all comes in and makes a lot of this stuff possible. And we need to organize our efforts, I agree with that. I want a chamber. You know, that needs to be a part, you know, to help the citizens and stuff. So, anyway, if you can just give me something in paper that says advantages of having this property, I'm probably gonna vote for this anyway, but I just can't see the impact it's gonna have right now. You know, unless, you know, we got people on board that can actually get out there and work, you know, bring these things in.
Well, you know, the hardest thing that we have to deal with is that, of course, you know, so many people just wanna deal with the south part of our community. And we're structuring things as groups are coming in, where we're asking them to help subsidize what is gonna be needed to regenerate downtown. So it's gonna take a, it didn't get like this overnight, and it's not gonna get fixed overnight, but we have to start at some point. And I'll be more than glad, I have some interns, I'll be more than glad to get them to go and help us.
This is a step in the right direction.
It is.
Like you stated, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think with us establishing this area as a cultural district, it starts rebranding our community and this area, because it's so easy for some people in the community saying, "Oh, we had a travel to Frederickburg, or I went to Morpha, or I went to other places," and they're so open in accepting other communities' cultural districts and tourism. But when it comes to supporting here in Pecos, oh, no, that's not, that's not how we do things here, that's not our culture here. Well, it is now, it is. So I think that this, I don't wanna wait on it. I think we just, we have to get going. Like, I think we look at it, we talk about it, we reschedule it, well, so-and-so isn't here, I mean, it's, the years are passing us by, and I, I don't wanna wait. So let's...
If I can say before you move, and the buildings, they're probably young. All we can do is try to talk to the owners and say, "Hey, help us clean it up." You know, I mean, it is what it is, we can't control them, but hopefully...
And is that building falling apart?
Then you didn't, you didn't...
Should we have a right for that?
I do have a question about it. On the resolution, as it's written, says that the city in conjunction with private funding is committed to providing X amount of funds from hot tax and private sector contributions, but it doesn't identify how much private, how much hot tax...
You know what, and you're absolutely right. Obviously, there's an anticipated cost of $500,000. That's not something that is out of the norm. We already have groups that are willing to put in a couple of hundred thousand dollars. We know the Economic Development Corporation. One thing that Mr. Dino and I talked about is that we didn't wanna obligate the city and the hot tax for it to do all of it. So the thing that I assured him is that we would go after the private funding, and the Economic Development Corporation would budget theirs, and we come back in late July, August with our budget as to how we would make a contribution on our part. So we earmark dollars that are actually through sales of property and/or the possibility of easement dollars. You know, we'll be more than glad to put those dollars aside.
There's gonna be a lot of pros and cons. I think the biggest thing for most people is the increase in property value.
That's a possibility.
A lot of people here, I call it the old blood is not used to change. And I also, not to get off subject, but I think we need to get more aggressive on these buildings that have been here for fifty years. And I think in order to start incorporating all this, sometimes we better do it back then, because how much longer are we gonna wait around and sit for things to happen? And not only that, you get passed by when you're not a culture district, through grants and so forth. So once you label yourself as that, it's not for everybody, but at the end of the day, you know, change is gonna happen, and if we don't move forward with the modernizations of our community, then how can we be getting these grants if we're not willing to make that sacrifice? Yeah, we might upset a lot of people here and there, but that might be something that we're gonna eventually catch as we go. But, you know, I've had some projects that I personally, as a private investor, wanted to look into down the road.
Correct.
And it would be here for downtown because of my love for my community and things that I wanna bring. But not only that, there's other people that are gonna piggyback off of these things. So with that being said and done, I'm with the council on this, and I stand by it at the moment.
Thank you.
And I know there's gonna be some pros and cons, like everything else. And, you know, a lot of people have been coming to me saying, you know, and I'm open to a lot, but still, I'm open to the future. And I think the future's now, especially with everything going up, not to talk all day, but all these new plants coming in, and these new projects coming in. And these people are from different cities, including myself, central Texas, that want that quality of life. But yet, we're so far behind pleasing other people to say, "Oh, we're not willing to do this because these people put me in office, or these people are the ones who really didn't know." We need to be able to, long story short, is to give them that quality of life so their wives, their families can move down here and say, "Why would I leave this beautiful, small Frederickburg while it's here in west Texas?"
That's right.
That's my opinion. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward on this resolution, which was 25-0608R, presented by Jimmy Dutchell of PBC, exactly correct. So thank you.
I've got a motion from Councilman Carrasco, a second from Councilwoman Trillo, to approve Resolution 25-06-08R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Mayor, council, thank you all.
Item F10, discuss, consider memorandum of understanding with the Reeves County Hospital District for the exchange and transferring of real property. Strategic goal five, promote opening consistent communications for all Leno City managers.
Mayor and council, Charles Leno, City Manager. This is one that we've been working on for quite a while, that y'all brought up, about the land swap between us and the hospital and the EDC, and we have land that we've been a little stingy with, but we needed something in return. I think we now have something that would be down on Third Street that would give us something. The initial plan is to have it available for our police station. There's been other discussions that may modify that, but it is definitely a piece of property that the city would do something with and would benefit us.
Are we swapping even acreage for even acreage, or...
No, we're not, and that's why there's some stuff that's built in there that is gonna, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some give and take that will be there. And we're giving frontage road for Business 20 Road. The size is a little bit different, not significant, less than an acre. The restrictions that are gonna be on it, there's a piece of it that is struck out, I think it may be on the one that you have, but the one that is signed by the hospital already, they just approved it last week. Brendan McKinney brought it to me. There was a strikeout because there was an easement right to the west of the current annex that was for a road, that had to be forgiven, or had to be disallowed by text dot. And the county had already had a verbal agreement with the county to, for the county to use it, and they plan on developing that into a parking lot. The hospital's agreeable for it. At first, they weren't, now they are. They are wanting to put their specialty clinic right there where that's at, with plans to do something with the old hospital subsequent to that. Right now, they have people, some of their staff that are using it as a residence. That's the housing crunch that we're in right now.
So this is a formal contract, a memorandum, this is just a...
MOU, still to be negotiated, yes, sir. All it is, is just a general agreement between the three parties to do this. Yes, sir.
Motion, you approve this. I'll second. A motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve the MOU with the Reeves County Hospital as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F11, discuss, consider a hotel occupancy tax funding request from the Town of Pecos City for a digital display board in the amount of $284,500. Strategic goal three, promote the visual image of Pecos, Charles Leno City Manager.
Mayor and council, this is an additional amount. Y'all do have a printout there on your table that you can look at. It's a big one, so it makes it nice. I can tell you, because after, I looked through it the first time, I'm going, okay, well, I got three duplicates. The actual, last three pages are not duplicates, okay? But what we've done is we've modified, and I worked with Councilman Saldana on this. It is now going to be a little bit bigger sign, but it's gonna be a three-sided sign. And it's going to be utilized, we are gonna generate some revenues off of it by utilizing for outside parties to advertise. We will currently, than that, Edward De Leon will control it, and we will have some county information that will be displayed on their advertising, but the goal is to get that to where we have something that's rotating all the time, and we get some of our local businesses and some of the oil companies to sponsor and pay for that. So we should be able to recover money. If we do have revenue that's generated off of that, it must go back into the hot fund. The hot board did approve this last, a week ago, Monday, for the additional $284,000. $284,500. This is now, the other thing, the reason price went up a little bit is because it went three-sided, but this also includes the pedestal that is going to go on.
Yeah, the first time we looked at this was two-sided. And if there's any kind of, where it's gonna stand, if there's any kind of development behind it, it's gonna block that one side, so that's when they started looking at it again, and now it's three-sided, so you can actually see it. But the extra cost that was, because we were thinking, well, we'll do the pedestal, we'll do electrical, but man, we're gonna call it, we're gonna have to find somebody to do that, and right now, finding people, but these people will do turnkey, and that's what it'll call. And this is right there going toward the cyclone. So it'll be, it's good right in that little triangle, it'll, it's a good, it's a good vantage point for us to see it. But I like that design of it, that company, they did an awesome job.
Can we put some ballots? Can we put some ballots or some...
Holly has designed the landscape around it to keep that from doing, yes, sir. And it will be lifted. The one thing that I do want to let you know, though, as you look through those layouts, the last three, the lights and the colors are different. So that's what you have to really take a look at, and maybe put them side by side to see what they are. I can tell you that the hot committee likes the last one the most.
We did a, forgive me, I just landed here, but we did, this is the most adequate location based upon traffic count.
Yes, sir, absolutely, yes, sir. And need, with the water park going in there and cyclone going in there, we have to do a better job of that, yes, sir.
Well, I'll make the, if there's any more questions, I'll make the motion, we approve the request for, from the hotel occupancy, from the Town of Pecos City for the digital display board as presented by Charles Leno City Manager.
I'll second. Go ahead. I have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Graham, to approve the hotel occupancy tax funding request for the digital display board in the amount of $284,500. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F12, discuss, consider a hotel occupancy tax funding request for the Town of Pecos City for the reimbursement of the purchase of the annual West of Pecos rodeo bumper stickers for 2025 in the amount of $3,340.60. Strategic goal one, sustainable economic development, Charles Leno City Manager.
Mayor and council, this is an item that City Secretary Cyra Nichols and I had a conversation about two and a half weeks ago, and she was getting a significant number of requests for bumper stickers. And because we might have had a little bit of chaos in the CVB in the chamber, there were none. And so I told her, I gave her the green light, and I told her order. Last week, I didn't wanna circumvent the hot because they do qualify for hot. I took them to the hot board on Monday, and then I'm bringing it to you today. They did approve it unanimously. If they hadn't approved it last time, I would have just, we would have put it in operating costs in the city and just did that. It's important that we got them out. With it being designated as hot, it will go into the CVB that you all authorized the other day. So that's where those numbers are at. But the, more than Cyra thought, were distributed already, because she went to look for some and was gonna go get rid of some more, and the majority of them have already been distributed throughout the community and in other surrounding communities.
We can get it away.
That's for you, or you can, we got more that you can give away?
No, the $3,500 that we purchased, we give away.
We're giving away. That's all we're doing, yes, sir.
Investment of power.
And that's advertising and tourism, and you would be, it was funny, Edward just went to a conference last week. Where was it at, Edward?
City of Bud.
In Buddha, Texas. And he got a picture, because one of the attendees had a jacket on that had all types of, like, stickers and stuff on it, and memos, and it had "Home of the World's First Rodeo" on there as Pecos, Texas. So it was pretty cool to see it. He got pictures and stuff, of course, because he's Edward, so...
And thank you, because I know this is, to me, this should be the rodeo, but they paying for these and pushing this forward, but we can't let it die. This is our town.
It's the reason why we had banners up and down Cedar Street, because the city's not gonna let those traditions go away.
Yes, sir. Right. May I make a motion, we approve the payment for the Pecos rodeo bumper stickers for 2025 in the amount of $2,340.60, presented by Charles Leno City Manager.
I'll second. I have a motion from Councilman Aronis, a second from Councilwoman Trillo, to approve the hotel occupancy tax funding request for the bumper stickers for 2025 rodeo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F13, update on new city council meeting streaming applications. Strategic goal five, promote opening consistent communications. Jesus Gomez, Director of IT.
So, Mayor and council, thank you for letting me present. Jesus Gomez, IT Director. I've been trying to find something that would fit in this room. Somebody mentioned earlier the acoustics in here. That's been a big challenge, and I found a couple of different companies, one a little closer in Midland Lubbock area, different offices, and then one in Dallas. So we're trying to find somebody that can help us accommodate for not only the ceiling, but the different areas for the speakers. So have speakers, to have a larger display, something more than this right here. Of course, the audio comes with it too, which is the bigger piece of this. So some of the thoughts, we're also now seeing the team's meeting that we had earlier, incorporating that to make sure that they can see us, we can see them, we can be heard. Videos play a little bit smoother than, I didn't do that on purpose to further this along, but just wanted to make sure you know that we're working on something, and I actually have one of the companies coming on Thursday to do a walkthrough and see this in person. I've sent them pictures, have kind of a proposal, but I want them to come see it before I take anything seriously, because I don't, I mean, just mounting things and lighting and all those things.
And then if we're gonna be doing a new house, chambers, then will that transfer?
Yes, ma'am. That's one thing that I, the only thing that won't transfer is probably the wiring. So that'd be the things we leave behind, but we can move speakers and different pieces. But it also, the thing that I've tried to find, and something that I've used at places I've worked before, is something where it's a tablet, where it doesn't have to be me, anybody could come in here and say, "Council meeting, everything turns on and lights up, and starts the meetings," and a little bit more proactive than just, you know, hey, there's a video we gotta put up, so I gotta do it. Now it's just a few button clicks and making it smooth, so that we keep the meetings streamlined.
I know one of the complaints is the streaming, that can't hear all the audio that's going on.
Absolutely. And this, this system was purchased in 2019 for the COVID times, and just trying to, I know Holly mentioned, or had the item earlier of the new council area, so trying to see all that along and making sure we find something that we can move, or at least primarily move. So we'll just have to get some work with cabling and things like that. But if anything, I'll try and push, I'm going to, not going to try, I'm probably going to push on the audio first, so we have the audio going, and then stage in the cameras and all those pieces. That's really the priority for, is for the audio to go along with the cameras.
And a timer?
And a timer, yes. Some of those features are, well, I'll put some ring lights in front of you, if you like. No, so.
I'm a little tired this time. I'm just getting it, it's not bad.
Yeah.
Without the council in force, they would stream it for some days. There were people that said, but then they went to the local cable company and said, hey, for your franchise, we'll knock a little bit down to give us a channel. Don't know if we can, they'll come here often, wherever we have a queue.
Right now, all of our items go to YouTube, but we can definitely look at maybe like some of the streaming services if they do that. Yep, thank you.
Some of the things where you'd feel like to see in the future, like when we get to that point, is the sharpest start. Sharing this with me, like on the screens, if you're viewing it from YouTube, they have access to what we're talking about.
Yes, sir. Different options we'll have for different screens and people will be able to see. And that was, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I want to add that as a part of these meetings, we'll not only be able to see cameras, but if somebody presents something and they turn it in with sufficient time, we can put it into the stream and it'll show on the stream. So not just people here can see it, but also people on the stream, so putting all that together.
Will they be able to see the speakers as well?
We're talking about camera there and camera there, because it's kind of hard to put it in places, but multi-cameras, and then eventually some sort of service that goes along with that and helps us produce that, similar to what the school district's doing right now. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F-14, discuss, consider ordinance 25-06-01, and are ordinance prohibiting the use of engine brakes, jack brakes? First reading, strategic goal 2, safe and secure for the city. Hector Prost, Councilmember, see.
Mayor and council, we're here to address an important issue that's been long overdue for our community. Do by any chance, do we have that video up, Edward? I'll tell you, so I'll tell you when we can play that. So we're here to discuss the importance issues of what is called a jack brake engine ordinance, and this affects the quality of life in our community. The use of jack brakes is, you may know, are types of engine braking system commonly used in large commercial vehicles. While they're effectively slowing down the vehicles, they also produce loud and disruptive noise, especially residential vehicles. For any of you who've never seen jack brakes, what they sound like, you can play the video real quick, but this is what they sound like while they're. So this excessive noise in our community has caused a nuisance for some, some time, and we keep talking about moving in the future. I've had some talks with hotel managers and owners, that it's disruptive towards the rooms on 285. We can no longer have meetings outside of Starbucks on a nice morning because of this noise. We're proposing the Hector Pena project moving forward down the road. A lot of people want to start being outside. King Shark's now building a 285 restaurant you put outside. Ideally, this is just something that needed to be recognized in the pollution itself. It increases stress levels, I mean, overall, it's the well-being of our community, and it's something that we should have looked into down the road. Now, before I get into that really quick, in order to achieve this, we might need to take some measures such as restrictive zones, designate specific areas within the city where these breaks are prohibited, such as residential neighborhoods, schools, hospitals, sensitive areas, signage to install clear visual signs indicating the restricted zones and important truck drivers of the jack brakes. And last but not least, implement a strict enforcement measure to ensure compliance with the regulations. This includes regular monitoring itself. So by taking these steps, we can improve the quality of life for residents, but most importantly, together we create a quiet and healthier, more harmonious environment for the citizens of Pecos.
I know there's some talent that prohibited inside cities.
You have that ability. I mean, it can be as restrictive as the entire city limits.
I would love to see that. Maybe get it out here.
We just got to make sure we check all the boxes, like Councilman Prost said, that way we make sure that we were Teflon and we can't get any blowback on it. And if we do do it to city limits, the positive piece of it is, it includes four text op thoroughfares, and it also, when, when it works like that, text op will be able to put it on their website so that truckers do know that it, this city does not allow it. And it's already there. So if they say, well, we didn't know, you, you had warning.
I agree with that, but is it going to be harder to enforce?
I don't think it'll be hard to enforce, it'll just have to be, you know, part of the traffic details. It's no different than the other ordinance, since we're looking at for other ordinance in this area, not just brakes, but music.
I make a motion to consider the ordinance 25-06, is there anyone? Listen, five.
We have a motion from Councilman Prost, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve the first reading of ordinance 25-06-01 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F-15, discuss the placement of the Pecos bill statute. Strategic Goal 3, promote visual image of Pecos. Art Arona, Councilmember, see.
I'll just make it, I'm going to show it. I just want to make sure that Pecos bill returns to where it was before, prior to the train wreck, if at all possible, but also to work with the museum, to see where they would want it in that spot, or they've mentioned across the street for the, the parks there by the town. So I just want to make sure that we accommodate them, especially the justice.
We hope to know more pretty soon. We've been, had some dialogue with Union Pacific, and we did, I mean, they have such a great system that we got to leave a message, and they said they will call you back within 72 hours of the notice. So we'll see if it's 72 real hours or 72 Union Pacific hours.
That sounds a little bit of sarcasm.
None at all, sir.
Have we heard anything since we approved the base, and we heard anything from the artist that's working on it?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
I guess I asked last time, where is Bass? Okay.
He's with, he's down with an artist that originally designed him to fix him up.
He's out of town?
Yeah, he is. Yeah. He left town, but he will be back.
We'll bring him back. Thank you.
How many, how many, how many, how many, how many, area?
We have ultimate control of that, so.
Any other discussion?
No, not at all, just thank you.
F-16, update on future convention centers. Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. That was mine. I just know we had talked about having another event center, and it's just kind of, that was Vanetta's push, and she's kind of not here to push, but I just want to know if we heard anything. I know the county was talking about possibly using some of their land.
They were, and there's still conversations, and I need to, I can tell you that Commissioner Nohos was out of town for two weeks in a row, and I was out of town for a week, I think. And so he and I have not got the time to get together and talk about it. Again, it's something that I would want to bring it back to you all, because it's ultimately your all's decision. And Paul would have to take it back to the commissioners. But I mean, I think the ones that were leading that were, he and I on that right now, out of the two by six, that's where he wanted to bring, it brought up, and it was discussed. We have a two by six meeting, I think in a few weeks. I don't know when it is, it's like July 6th or 9th or something like that. And it will be brought up again at that meeting, and then I'll be able to give you all an update on that.
Do you like that?
I thought it was 9th and 23rd, yeah.
Item F-17, update on amendment 14-09-06, regulating the establishment and operation of recreational vehicle parks and individual recreational vehicles. Strategic Goal 5, promote open and consistent communication. That was one of my.
Mayor and council, I want to provide a brief update on the RV ordinance that's in your packet. If you've had a chance to review it, this is a draft ordinance, and if you have the red line, strike through version in, in the packets.
Not red line.
No? Or maybe they removed the red lines? But there's, is there the draft ordinance in there? Is there an ordinance in there?
Yeah, there's an ordinance.
Okay, they, it probably uploaded without.
There's no red line, so I don't know what was changed.
Okay, I'll share the strike through with you. This is a draft ordinance, so the one you have in there is probably the draft without the red line. I apologize for that. Just to briefly sum up what the ordinance is without going into detail, we tried to set clearer expectations from the city and the RV park owners. We also added verbiage for more flexibility for the option of if you did create an RV park with amenities or without amenities, which we did not have before. Also, it references the RV park fees, which would be in our master fee schedule. What we have right now is, instead of with or without amenities, we actually did tiered structures. So like, these would be the amounts, for example, RV park zero to 25, 25 to 50, 50 to 25, so that the smaller size RV parks aren't paying the same thing as the larger RV parks. And then aside from that, we have the two different tiers of with the RV parks that did, because we do have existing amenity parks that do have amenities, or if we have future RV parks that build with amenities, and then another tier for without amenities. Just trying to make something more attainable, that if you don't have amenities, we still encourage the, a good development of an RV park. I think a lot of the confusion on this RV park is the people that have tin cup permits, and that's where all the confusion of, we have RV ordinance, master fee schedule, we have tin cup permits. We are proposing draft verbiage for tin cups, which is temporary non-conforming use permit. Because of the housing shortage, you'll remember, we did allow temporary non-conforming use, which means they're in the wrong zone, they didn't have enough, they didn't have an acre or less, but we did allow temporary smaller RV parks throughout the community. So we have verbiage written up where we, we're going to recommend to council, of course, this is all ultimately up to council, but we are gonna, we have verbiage that we're going to recommend, we allow for anybody that temporarily, that currently has a tin cup, that we allow them to renew their tin cup permit for another one or two years. That way, it'll give the city time to reevaluate our housing situation then, and it'll give the tin cup permit holders time to, to start thinking about, just in case it doesn't get renewed, what can they repurpose their property into? That's where we're at. I think we internally need to have one more meeting with our RV committee that we created to finalize, but once we have that one meeting, we could probably get it done, it just kind of depends when everybody's available. We could bring all of that back to council.
Does it own the RV committee?
We have staff mixed with different RV park owners, whether they're in the ETJ, a small RV park owner, a larger RP, RV owner. We have someone with an RV park that has amenities, and we have someone with an RV park that does not have amenities. So it's.
And Councilman Saldana?
Yes.
Out of that meeting.
And two council members.
You know, it's temporary, it's either we do away with them, or we change that name. To me, it just doesn't make sense to have a temporary use permit, it's.
It's ten years old.
It's been temporary for ten years.
Yeah, it should, it should, either, okay, you're over it, it's done with, or change the name and let them go on about it.
And it'll also have language, this is just for the ones that currently have one, but not to issue anymore.
Yeah.
That would seize that.
Because I think we have enough, like we have King Shark, we have the one over there at Prison Road. So the larger ones.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a bunch, and everybody has a different situation, so it's not a, what.
One size fits all solution.
Yes, and we found that out during our meetings. Everybody has.
And the fact that they, that they meet all the ordinances, because if they're not up to code, then, you know, we can take action on that, because they have to be up to what they agreed 10 years ago.
Yes.
So that's, that's, because if it's not, the spacing is not right, then they're, they're out of compliance. And if they're out of compliance, there's going to be, I can't remember how the, how that, that thing is written, but being that it's a temporary for the tin cups, you know, we need to look at all that, because we don't need any more RV parks in town, because they're not legal in town to begin with. Just until this ordinance gets, we can kill it at any time we want to.
Yes, sir.
But at the moment, we've got to handle what we've got. Because the other communities, like Monahans, and my brother has one in Odessa, and he's, has to be out of city.
So that, that's the update, that's where we're at, and that's where, that's, that's our update. So one more meeting and we'll bring everything to council.
Make sure the red line?
Yes, and I'll make sure we provide the red line, so that you can see what the original RV ordinance was and what has changed. I apologize.
Give it to me on paper.
I, I can email you. Okay, and I'll give it to you on paper.
So at this time, we are going to go into executive session under Government Code, Section 551.071, constipation of attorney, 551.072, real estate, 551.074, personal issues, 551.087, economic development, and it is 7:37. 551.087, Economic Development, and it is 7:37.
We are back in open session. It is 8:31 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Anything else for our next meeting?
F-14.
F-14?
Yes, the second reading of the J break.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'm going to be bringing what we have on the agenda and the ordinance about the decimal levels. We kind of made one out of Fort Worth and Fort Stockton that kind of sets different levels depending on the time. So at 10:00 PM it'll go a bit lower. But we'll bring that back at Tuesday's meeting.
Ms. Winters hasn't been here in a while.
She's still not...
She's still calling.
She's calling. She's not just showing up.
I get calls around midnight and...
I talked to her last week.
Hey, well, the guy that kept showing up for the Argyle stuff.
Greg Demirz.
Greg. But yes, this is not that company?
He has, but he's still calling.
He's still calling?
Yeah.
Oh, this revolving loan fund was Krista Ayew. I can't believe it.
We can bring her up.
I'm sorry?
Just put the payment loss.
I want to see her name so I can hear it.
So can we file a warrant for arrest?
We'll bring that up at the next meeting as an update.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. We are back in open session. It is 8:31 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Anything else for our next meeting?
F-14.
F-14?
Yes, the second reading of the J break.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'm going to be bringing what we have on the agenda and the ordinance about the decimal levels. We kind of made one out of Fort Worth and Fort Stockton that kind of sets different levels depending on the time. So at 10:00 PM it'll go a bit lower. But we'll bring that back at Tuesday's meeting.
Ms. Winters hasn't been here in a while.
She's still not...
She's still calling.
She's calling. She's not just showing up.
I get calls around midnight and...
I talked to her last week.
Hey, well, the guy that kept showing up for the Argyle stuff.
Greg Demirz.
Greg. But yes, this is not that company?
He has, but he's still calling.
He's still calling?
Yeah.
Oh, this revolving loan fund was Krista Ayew.
I can't believe it. We can bring her up.
I'm sorry?
Just put the payment loss.
I want to see her name so I can hear it.
So can we file a warrant for arrest?
We'll bring that up at the next meeting as an update.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. We are back in open session. It is 8:31 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. We are back in open session. It is 8:31 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
This is what he does and I've seen it. He'll go play on the side of the road and run down the road.
Randy, by now you should have already had it tied up.
They tried that. It didn't work.
One thing that y'all did talk about is maybe having a discussion on the RMA and the MBL.
Yeah.
Anything else for our next meeting?
F-14.
F-14?
Yes, the second reading of the J break.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'm going to be bringing what we have on the agenda and the ordinance about the decimal levels. We kind of made one out of Fort Worth and Fort Stockton that kind of sets different levels depending on the time. So at 10:00 PM it'll go a bit lower. But we'll bring that back at Tuesday's meeting.
Ms. Winters hasn't been here in a while.
She's still not...
She's still calling.
She's calling. She's not just showing up.
I get calls around midnight and...
I talked to her last week.
Hey, well, the guy that kept showing up for the Argyle stuff.
Greg Demirz.
Greg. But yes, this is not that company?
He has, but he's still calling.
He's still calling?
Yeah.
Oh, this revolving loan fund was Krista Ayew.
I can't believe it.
We can bring her up. I'm sorry?
Just put the payment loss.
I want to see her name so I can hear it.
So can we file a warrant for arrest?
We'll bring that up at the next meeting as an update.
Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Then we'll go to item I, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
What are we going to talk about trash?
Mine last week went across the alley into my yard for the house.
Well, you didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
What?
You didn't want you to have to carry it too far.
We'll bring that up at the next meeting as an update. Anything else for our next meeting? We are adjourned and it is 8:34 PM.